Chair Kristi Matali, I'm joined by Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Kelly, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly, and our moderator tonight, Mr. Mark McDermott, our TM moderator. I ask you to all please rise for the pledge. Mark, would you please lead us in the pledge? Hello, everybody. To those hopefully joining at home, this is one of two town hall meetings the Board of Education holds each year. It's an opportunity for the public to engage with the board, to discuss the facilities, finances, and programs of the Fairfield Public Schools. We take public comment during our regular meetings, but that public comment is not a two-way dialogue, so this gives us a chance just to engage with the public. Mr. McDermott will be our moderator tonight. That will enable me, as a chair, just to participate in the conversation and not run the meeting. We will set a time limit of, you know, for questions of three minutes a person to start. Board members can raise their hands if they want to respond to any questions that the public asks. Mr. McDermott, welcome, and thank you for volunteering to moderate tonight.
Thank you very much, and it's my pleasure. And I guess we'll welcome our one participant tonight to the desk. If you could please sign in and tell us who you are and your address, and we'll get started.
Hi there. Katie Flynn, 204 Grandview Road. Since I'm the only one here, I'm going to attempt to speak for the public informally, and thank you all for your efforts, your meetings, your insight, your support, and your service. All of you are volunteers. I'm a volunteer in the PTA capacity, and I know how much time it takes up for me and takes me away from my family and my children, so I very much appreciate you all doing the same in service of all of our children. So, I'll start there. The main reason I'm here, since you as a body approved the operating budget, we have seen other town bodies meeting to discuss that in totality of our town budget. We've heard several public officials, as well as members of the public, assert their belief that a now approximately $3 million reduction is possible to be found in this budget that will not affect children or the classroom. I'd just like to know all of your insight if you think that that assessment is correct.
Anybody want to go first? Ms. Max and Cannelly?
No. I could stop there, but of course I won't.
I thought you were stopping. That was, I was gonna say next.
I appreciate that very much.
I was gonna go, wow, from what I've been watching, you go on for, well, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's, look, I would, it would be my contention that aside from budget cuts that result from unknowns, like, oh, in fact, that what we have to allocate for insurance is less than what came in, you know, aside from things like that, from things like, oh, we ended up spending less on snow removal than we thought. Every other cut affects children. If we're cutting an administrator, if we're cutting a secretary, if we are cutting custodian, if we're cutting a program, everything in some way impacts a child and the service we offer that child. So, I would always say that that is a false flag. But in this time in particular, there is simply no way. $3 million is not going to impact children, and anyone saying that, it is an absolutely disingenuous statement. I recognize that it is, I'm going to try to innocently say hopeful. It is a hopeful statement, but it is inaccurate. It's not going to happen.
Mr. Peterson?
Thanks for your question. I'm going to take, I'm going to say no, but I'm going to take somewhat of an opposite tack on this. As you know, last year I voted against the budget. This year, I did voice publicly some frustrations with the fact that there weren't additional savings found by the administration in the budget assembly process. However, I was pleased with the administration's efforts in, you know, having heard that message from, I think, several members of the board, to look for ways to find extra efficiencies, to look for ways to use grant money in ways that, for, you know, for things that we thought was appropriate. I have also been long an advocate for structural change, which I understand is a topic that's freighted with emotion, and something that we've actually taken some steps to try to define a little more rigorously. Because I do think that going, I think the fundamental problem going forward is that our obligations are outstripping our ability to raise additional funds through the town. And as I noted in one of the budget meetings, the percentage of the overall town budget that is absorbed by the Board of Education budget has been rising in recent years. And it's a trend that I find worrisome. But what I would prefer to do is to work in a deliberative fashion, in a transparent fashion, with feedback from board members, other town officials, and the public in ways to find additional efficiencies. I have some ideas of things that we could do with this budget. I may propose further on in this process, but I'm very skeptical about kind of the scalpel taking off a chunk without a careful consideration of where those funds are going to come from. Now, that's not to say that I don't approve of some of the things that the administration has proposed to do, but we need to have those conversations, and we need to think deeply about that, not simply say, you guys can suffer a 1.5% cut with no consequences. And one of the things I bet Ms. Jacobson will talk about is the degree to which maintenance budgets over the years have kind of suffered. Well, we'll put off painting, we'll put off paving, we'll put off tile repair, plumbing repair, working on that bathroom, but things come to roost. You know, we have seven-year-old laptops that some of the teachers are using. You know, the list of kind of tier-three maintenance that we, projects that we have is extensive. And in consideration of all those things, I wish this cut were smaller.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anybody else? Mr. Asa?
I think Mr. Peterson made a lot of good points, and I'm not going to repeat them because I agree with that. I do agree with the point that any kind of cut is going to in some way touch the kids. Do I believe that a cut is always extremely detrimental? No. But that being said, I think, and have, you know, been advocating for a while, that we need to really look deeply. And I think this board, we're getting there, and we were getting there prior to the pandemic, and now we're getting back on track. And we're going to have to have conversations on facility usage and efficiencies, what we're doing with our next 10 years with our facilities. Our district improvement plan is under discussion now. We're working on, you know, that for the next five years. And through all these processes and tough discussions, we are going to have to find areas to reduce our spending. I don't believe that a 200-plus million-dollar budget is sustainable long-term. So, yes, we are, as a board and future boards, going to have to look at areas that we can find savings. And does that mean programmatic changes or changes in the classroom? It could. But I do believe this board is committed to a thoughtful and thorough discussion on those things, and I don't think anybody here would intentionally do anything to hurt children.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. Ms. Jacobson?
Thank you for your question. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, others who have come. You know, I think, just for the benefit of the public, I'm sure you're aware that before it left our table, we did make adjustments to the superintendent's proposed budget of a little over $1.7 million already, in large part, and grateful for ARP funds that helped us do that, that would qualify as expenses. So, if you think about the overall picture here, 1.7 has already been taken out of this budget, and then another 2.9 is what we're looking at, including the insurance issue that we have. You know, you're up to a $4 million from what was originally proposed. So, certainly, at the moment in time, things sometimes come in favorable as we get closer to June, maybe insurance changes, maybe there's an extra retirement, maybe there's things like that. So, it's always prudent to say, where are we in this moment in time? But we know historically, when you're looking at three, four million-dollar reductions, those historically have not been able to be absorbed without making some changes. And I would agree with Mrs. Max and Cannelly. You know, whether indirect or indirect, everything touches a classroom, touches a student. So, I would say that I'm concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, well, I think one thing that might be helpful, and I'm sure you probably have already been looking at these since you've been to our budget meetings, but just looking at, it's posted on the website, the superintendent's recommended budget, and now we have also posted on the website, and we have the physical copies of the Board of Ed's approved budget. So, if you go to page 28 in the superintendent's budget and page 40 in the Board of Ed budget, it's the major budget drivers. And so, you can kind of really go through, first of all, it's really helpful, as Mrs. Jacobson said, you know, this board did approve reductions to the superintendent's recommended budget with his recommendations, which I think definitely, you know, were helpful. But I think it, just looking at these numbers, you really see how little there is, how little wiggle room there is. I mean, the carryforward staff, the increase is $2.6 million, and that's contractual obligations, the reserve for unsettled contracts, projected attrition, and retirement savings. So, and that's 2.6 right there. So, and then you just look at some of the other numbers, benefits, you know, 1.3 million right there. And so, these are things that we really don't have an awful lot of jurisdiction over. And so, I think it's really important to look at that and just realize that while, you know, obviously, all the different town bodies have different responsibilities, and I understand and respect that, but I just think it's important to look at these numbers and just say, I personally don't see how we can make a reduction the size that has been recommended and not feel some pain somewhere. I can't imagine anyone at this table would be happy about it. I'm sure that the superintendent and his staff would not be happy about it either. But nonetheless, you look at these two pages, and I have a lot of trouble seeing, as I'm sure many other people do, of how we can possibly make reductions that will not impact students in some way.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Any other members of the board? Ms. Vitale?
I just agree with everything my fellow board members have said. I've advocated on behalf of this board in front of the other town bodies. I don't see a way out right now. Last year, we saw the health insurance number changing favorably in the right direction as the budget went through other town bodies. That is not the case this year. You know, just what's happening in Europe right now with Ukraine, we're seeing a rise in fuel costs, inflation. Things are just not really trending in the right direction, and especially now coming off of the last two years of the pandemic, that student need is driving this budget. And as Mrs. Max and Cannelly said, everything touches a child. Professional development of our staff touches a child. You don't invest in your teachers, you know, that's the infrastructure of our school district. We have our buildings, that infrastructure, but we are a people business. Mrs. Gerber gave the figures. That's what drives our budget, our investment in our teachers and our staff. They are our most important asset. They're with our children every day. And, you know, this board unanimously approved our budget and think it's worth the investment. So, you know, we're going to have these discussions, and in terms of structural change, you know, last budget cycle, the superintendent and his staff took a closer, a deeper dive, looking at some of the high school classes, and saw some savings there. I think that process will happen again as we move, you know, deeper into the spring and students finish enrolling in classes, and hopefully, you know, we'll be finding some savings there as well. But that also affects children. You know, we reduced five high school teachers last year to help mitigate last year's reduction to the budget. Mr. Cummings met with the teachers on Monday, and Mr. Asa and I were invited just to sit in, and we, you know, we didn't participate really as board members. We just really listened to the teacher's point of view. And many high school teachers did say that, you know, even just having, you know, two or three extra students in a class going from 22 to 25, you know, it has an impact because the needs of children after the last two years have grown, and especially the social-emotional needs that teachers are just teaching their curriculum areas, and also very tuned in to just the whole child. So, I, to answer your question, I don't see. I am really concerned about the reduction as it stands right now. And I thank you for your question, for coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Is that it from the board? Well, I'll let you come back because you were the only one here, and we got scared. So, you can come back after we let the others go first. Maybe everybody can go twice. We'll see. You never know. I know Frank takes a long time, so we'll get, so introduce yourself, name, address, and write it down on the paper before you leave the table.
Will do. Frank Zehiggin, 20 Chelsea Street. And first, thank you guys for doing this. Again, you do it every year. You do so much over and above the call. And to do this for the town, give us additional time, is really over and above the call duty, so really appreciate it. Admittedly, I paid less attention to the discussions about racial imbalance and the plan to address it, but in light of where we find ourselves now, and with respect to having to make the significant cuts that you talked about, the 2.5 million to the budget that was approved by the Board of Ed, having seen some of the preliminary items on the chopping block, many which do impact student learning, I thought it would be good to hear a little bit more about the plan. And with the decreased numbers at the elementary level, which is now starting to seep into the middle schools, it's not surprising to see the challenges facing 6th grade with respect to team or crew sizes. And there's even discussion now about combining 7th and 8th grade teams across schools, which, when you consider going to a block schedule, would put enormous pressure on the staff if they choose to do that. So, hopefully, they don't choose that one of the things that was on the block. Frankly, I stood before this board, not this one, some of you were here, a few years ago, cautioning about the challenges the middle schools would be facing in a few years, and here we are, facing them now. But getting back to the racial imbalance issue and pausing before I say the dreaded R-word, which I'm sure can't be avoided, to resolve it, I'd be interested to hear more about the process we'll be using. And as you know, there's been a fair amount of criticism by other town bodies about the absence of making significant structural change in the light of increasing enrollment, but surely the pandemic, I understand the situation. But if we're going to employ outside consultants to assist with making future projections and ideas, can you expand a little further on the parameters we would be giving them before they do so, or what the process will be to get to that point? And some of you who have been on the board for a while have heard me ask this before, but will this be a comprehensive look, which means not only looking at elementary schools, but middle schools and high schools? And if so, will we be looking at the parameters employed before giving an outside consultant a charge? For instance, with the conversation of how we feed both the middle and the high schools, will that be on the table? The last time we did a comprehensive townwide redistricting initiative goes back to the expansion of Woods, which was more than 10 years ago. And the parameters used became a Rubik's Cube because there were a number of them which ended up in sending our kids from Stratfield down to Tomlinson. And as we know how expensive transportation is, what, 5% of the budget is now becoming, one can only wonder how much we could save by more geographical emphasis. Previously, the parameters used, if you recall, were, we want to keep neighborhood schools, want to create as little disruption as possible. With 11 elementary schools and three middle schools, we wanted to assure that no middle school ended up with a Singleton. So, Woods and Ludlow had four elementary schools feeding it, and Tomlinson had three. So, no Singleton means that all the schools feeding Tomlinson would go to Ward. Ludlow all went to Ludlow, and in the case of Woods, Osborne Hill and Holland Hill go to Ludlow, Jennings and North Stratfield went to Ward. Now, having taught 8th grade, I can tell you that it was sad to see the kids split up, as many of them had made friends over the past three years, who would now be going to a different high school. So, the Singleton is a good, was a good parameter. And then the last one is the elementary school will determine which high school you go to. So, neighborhood schools, little disruption, Singleton, all makes sense to me, but the elementary school determining a high school hopefully will be in the discussion when we get there. I'd also point out, if you look at the enrollments in the elementary schools in grades 2 to 5 now and push them out to the high schools they would attend, there'd probably be a difference of about 200-plus kids, more at Ludlow than at Ward. And clearly, the team size issue in the middle schools will be ongoing for quite some time now, with the current feeds and no changes. Anyway, I just wanted to hear a bit more on where we are, the plan going forward. And lastly, I'll apologize in advance if there had been significant discussions of what I've said, as I haven't been as attentive, as involved as I have been in the past, so.
Thank you, Mr. Zehiggin. Who wants to tackle that first? You guys spoke already, so we're going to start with Ms. Guernsey, sorry. Ladies first.
Thanks so much. Thank you for your questions. And I'd love to start just addressing the first part of your question about the team models at the middle school. And this is something that's of great concern to me. It's my understanding that this model is what makes our middle schools so successful, and I value that and I understand it. And it's something that I would like to protect at almost all cost, even though the 6th grade has already slipped away. So, that's something that I'm interested in, looking at really carefully if additional changes are proposed, as they were in that, the proposed list. Regarding the redistricting, that's a conversation I don't even want to start right now. I feel like, and I've said this before, we're in a, still in a crisis, so I don't think it's a great time to have this discussion because of the harm that it could cause to our students and our community. So, I'd like to push that off a little bit, not because I'm afraid of the conversation, but because I think it's in the best interest of our students. And certainly, all the points that you made about feeder schools, you know, those are valuable points, and it's not something that we've really talked about at all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. So, we'll come around the table to Mr. Asa.
Frank, you've been doing this a long time. Next time, can you bring like a cheat sheet for a question that's this long? Because I can't remember everything you said, but I'm going to try and hit on a few.
I was sitting there thinking, thank God, I'm not answering this because I lost him in the first sentence.
So, a couple of things I just want to touch on. Not too long ago, I think it was in November, Chairman Vitale and I, and Mr. Cummings, and Dr. Parrish went up to the state regarding, we were summoned for an update and discussion with the Legislative Committee regarding the status of our plan. And we discussed with that committee, and basically told them that, you know, prior to the pandemic, we had just started, and we had a consultant come and give scenarios, and the pandemic hit. And we, in more words than one, basically told them that they need to give us a little credit for what we've done in this pandemic, and told them that the work would resume. To be clear, you know, our racial imbalance plan hasn't changed. It's still the plan, you know, that was approved years ago. And we were asked to provide a written update as to a timeline, which Mr. Cummings presented to the board in January, I believe, or in February. It's been posted to the district website, and it lays out a timeline. It is, it's a proposed timeline. It's not hard and fast. And we will be going back up there in May for a scheduled visit again to follow up. For me, as a board member, and I think many others have voiced this, you know, I don't have any interest in breaking up a community, you know, like McKinley. That's not something that I want to do. And I don't think that we should be making drastic changes in this town simply because of our violation of the racial imbalance statute. I think that there are many changes that need to be made to that statute, but I recognize that that won't happen. There are not enough legislators out there with constituents that this affects. There's a few towns in the state that are affected by this. So, there's no way in the world legislators are going to tackle this subject if it doesn't affect their constituents. So, we're not going to change the law. We've, you know, I've said to the point, at some point, what are they going to do to us, right? And this isn't dismissing the idea that we have imbalanced schools. I would argue that the problem that we have is that our other 10 elementary schools are not diverse enough. That being said, we're being tasked to solve a town housing problem. And even the former chairman, Cordona, when he was the chair of the state board when we were up there a couple of years ago, recognized this and even offered to work with us and work with other town leadership and talk about this and what can be done. So, for me, I'm not going into any kind of long-range planning specifically for racial imbalance. Now, I am a proponent of working on a new 10-year facilities plan for this district. And the new facilities committee that I am going to be chairing now was recently created. And one of the things that came from our first meeting was the goal really being, working on a new 10-year plan that we can do the footwork, the legwork, to bring to the board, because this is a full board discussion. And one of the things that may come of that work is, you know, finally realizing, where are the open seats? Where, what are the trends? Do we need as many buildings as we have? I'm not saying we're doing anything right now, but we have to look at everything, and we have to look and see where it falls. I honestly don't believe, even with a redistricting, that we are going to solve the racial imbalance problem to a point that we won't be in it again. So, if we make minor changes and move kids here and there to solve a problem that we're still going to be potentially on the line with Holland Hill and McKinley, I don't think it's worth it. Now, do I think it's worth it to look at our overall facility utilization and our overall infrastructure and see if we need to make changes there, and then see how that affects the racial imbalance, and maybe it will help with that? That's my tact. And when we do this work, Chairwoman Vitale has said that the plan is this year to get back to this, and, but as a board, as a working group, special meetings, the work of the facilities committee, the work of the finance committee, all coming together so we can have fruitful discussions, and then make those decisions on what our charge will be to the consultant. So, I'm not sure if that directly answers you, but those are my thoughts on what you asked.
So, I'm not, so I'm clear. Are you saying, then, that we're kind of going to push the racial imbalance, addressing that issue to the side, and not really go after that?
I wouldn't say it's pushing it to the side, but I think we're going to focus on the district as a whole, and what's best for the district as a whole, and hope that along the way, yes, we address this. But as an individual board member, do I plan to push, to target, and make one of the goals solving racial imbalance in this district? No, that's not my goal. Do we have issues? Do we have imbalances? Yes. But the only way per our plan, and what the state wants us to do, is completely and drastically redistrict the whole town for this main, one purpose? I am not committed to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. Ms. Vitale, did you have a comment you want to make there, or was you away from Mr. Peterson? Mr. Peterson, floor is yours.
Thank you. Nick said a lot of the things that I was going to say, primarily that I think that the idea of redistrict needs to be decoupled in some ways from the racial balance issue, because I think that even if we did not have the racial balance issue, I think that the population imbalances between our schools call out for a broad top-down redistricting. And I've been advocating for that, as you may know, for years. By the same token, like other board members, I do not see that as a very near-term thing because of the upheavals that our students and families have faced in recent years. I don't think that means that we can't begin the conversations. In fact, one step that we did take is to ask our demographers, excuse me, to prepare a new set of 10-year projections, because the ones that we got directly before the pandemic in February 2020 are clearly obsolete at this point, or at least we assume that they need to be checked. But we did not ask them to provide us, as we have in previous iterations, with redistricting scenarios. So, we're not ready to have that stage of the conversation yet. And as Mr. Asa said, those are full board conversations that I'm very willing to have, and Ms. Guernsey said this too, but it needs to be a longer-term process. It needs to involve, you know, community feedback, and needs to involve kind of an understanding of where development is going on in this town. Like God, I want Grassmere back. It would solve almost all of our problems, but I'm not going to relitigate something from 1981. But I do want the public to know that I think that we are prepared to have the difficult conversations, but this is going to be a longer-term process, because it needs to be done very deliberately.
And when would those be starting, these, those meetings?
So, they're starting right now. The facilities committee began meeting. As Mr. Peterson said, we're waiting for the 10-year projections. There's been a lot of new development in town, and the real estate market has been booming. So, we want to really see what our schools look like in the projections, and what the diversity. I mean, I think that our community may be getting more diverse, the numbers at each schools might be a little bit different. So, that is step one. In terms of the racial imbalance plan, we are inviting the State Board of Ed to come down and to visit McKinley. I mean, I think that our community may be getting more diverse, the, the numbers at each schools might be a little bit different. So that is step one. In terms of the racial imbalance plan, we are inviting the State Board of Ed to come down and to visit McKinley again to see if they have some suggestions for, you know, basically, for the, what's their suggestion for addressing their issue? I'm going to call it that, being that, you know, we're basically following state statute and they haven't been down for a few years. We're also going to be, I'm reaching out to TPZ and just other town bodies just to get a, a better idea of where the town foresees future housing and how, if there's diverse, more diversified housing across town, how that might affect our schools and the future of the racial imbalance plan. So that is kind of the, the to-do list for the rest of this school year.
And I would hope you'd be somewhat open and creative perhaps in things that maybe on first glance, you might not think make sense. For instance, I'll just throw it out there and it may not make sense at all, but with the declining numbers in the elementary and you have two schools with about 250 kids and you're talking about utilization, I mean, is something to consider to have elementary be okay to six. Do you need three middle schools? I mean, just to be creative that way. I mean, those are possibilities that you could be looking at to repurpose a building to, for, you know, for ECC. So there's a lot of, you know, I understand it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking, but I just ask you to be, be creative that way. And just to come back to the one comment about the teams and the splitting of the teams and I'm glad to hear that you, you are concerned about that because it is, it is the key to middle school. And when they even talked about splitting teams among schools, kids are the team. It's not the teachers that are the teams. It's the kids who are the team. And so to think about splitting teachers to go from school to school is just, especially in light of a block schedule, that's insanity. I mean, that would really be a problem. And we're going to have, with the current system, we're going to have very, we're going to have this problem that you have now in sixth grade where you just basically, if you went to contract, you could probably get away with two teams in both schools. It's going to be very close. I know you only cut one team in total, but you actually could, could almost have two teams in both of those schools, but you're right at the cusp. And then you're going to be facing that issue for six, seven more years, you know? So what's happening in sixth grade now is going to be the problem in seventh and eighth grade in the next two years as well. So just to point that out.
Anybody else from the board? Ms. Jacobson. And thank you, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Vitale, for your comments.
I won't take too much time, but just wanted to raise a couple additional points beyond what some of my fellow board members have stated in terms of racial imbalance. So I just want, and we're not sure if you're aware, but when we were doing this work prior to the pandemic, our consultants told us that they will not predict out based on their scenarios racial imbalance. So even if we have plans for redistricting in the sense of a different approach that has nothing to do with racial imbalance, it's not something that they're going to project out given volatility in numbers. So that's just, I'm not sure if you're aware of that point, that they won't say, well, yeah, if you do this in five years, you're going to be imbalanced. It's not something that they told us that they would do, even if, when we did have that charge. I would take just a little bit of a different language in terms of the State Board of Ed, in terms of being in violation, you know, really what we need to be doing per statute is to have a plan and that's what we have, you know? And we've had plans throughout the years. But, you know, I don't know if you or anyone had the chance to listen to some of the Senate discussion on the chef agreement the other day, but if you haven't, I would really highly encourage you to do so. We know that this is an incredibly old set of standards or statutes and regulations. And, you know, some thinking has changed about, you know, needing to move a community that is so special to itself in, in order to reap some benefit to another area. So I don't want to get too much into that philosophy or ideology at this point, but I also don't want us walking away or having this conversation, and I believe Mr. Asa raised this point too, as if the McKinley is some sort of a problem. And I will say, when I've gone to meetings there or listened to meetings up at the State Board, that is how they are referred to. And I take issue with that language by them. And I think that we have some educating to do and I hope that they do come and visit again about those families and, and children that are part of our community. So I have a little bit of a different thinking about this. And like I said, you know, it sounds like the board will be having conversations about this going forward from a facility standpoint, but when we're talking about members of our community, I'd like to be cautious in how we talk about that.
I'm happy to hear how strong you guys are about that, how strong a position you're taking on it. So it's good to hear. And I do look forward to someday coming back here when we can finally address how we determine who goes to the high schools. And one day we're going to do that because it is insane that an elementary school determine what high school you go to when you spend three years in a middle school.
Are you advocating for being on that committee when it comes?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to-
I'm not advocating for that. I'm just advocating I'll be back.
Oh, okay. Because I'm going to write your name down now.
Just come and I'll be back.
Thank you, Mrs. Hagan. I think everybody knows who's next in this crowd because you all came at different times. I think it was Mr. Curly, correct? No? You're not commenting, just observing tonight. Good for you. It's too dark to play golf. You could go hit balls somewhere. Name an address.
You have to hold a button. Press it. Hold it down. Oh, I've been avoiding speaking into microphones for a year. Kelly McWinnie, Churchill Road. I do have a question, but I just, I want to say thank you to all of you. This has been a very hard two years and aside from our teachers, I don't know anyone who's been more on the front lines of advocating for our kids. And it's been very sad to see infighting amongst parents. And I just want you to know that there are many people who are very grateful for everything that you've done. And, you know, I've been coming and watching meetings for a long time, so some of you feel very familiar to me and I just can't thank you enough. So that's my little spiel about that. There has been talk that directly correlates, well, our, our population is dipping, that should automatically mean a huge or significant reduction in budget. And I know when I started as a parent in this district, Sandy Hook was followed very shortly after and all the security costs. And I know there's many drivers that go into a budget aside from pure student numbers. So I was wondering if you could speak to the thought that there's like this absolute direct, like one-to-one correspondence between number of children in seats and budgetary costs. I have my own thoughts on it, but I'm curious to hear what you think.
Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I'm going to take a slightly different tack on it, just based, talking about why budgets increase and how they might not necessarily be tied to increases or decreases in population. You know, as long as I've been active in this district, there has been one or another school projects going on, you know, because the schools were not taken care of very well. And, you know, we're trying to get air conditioning, get rid of the portables, you know, we had 60 portables at one point. You know, it takes a long time. We've got a lot of schools, a lot of buildings. And it's really been wonderful to see over the past 17 years, to see the portables go away and to see these lovely new or partially new schools. But they're air-conditioned, which is what we need. And, and I dearly hope that every single one of our schools will eventually be fully air-conditioned. It's not going to happen right away, but we do need to realize that when we air condition those schools, it's going to cost more to air condition them. And, you know, that's just a fact. It will cost more. I mean, as much as the prices of fuel go up and other costs go up, it will also cost more to keep these schools running. That's just the way it is. And while we certainly doesn't mean that we should then not improve the rest of our schools, that is something that we need to keep in mind, you know? And facilities has always been something that I've been incredibly passionate about, making sure that we have equity across all the different schools. And we're going to continue to have to fight for that, but we also need to be cognizant of the fact that that will increase. So even if there may be fewer students in each building, those buildings may cost more to heat and air condition and be taken care of. And, and so I think that's something that we really need to keep in mind and, and that shouldn't scare us away from making these improvements, but we need to realize that this is going to happen. And it's a cost of doing the right thing. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Any other board members? Mr. Asa?
He's quicker than you, Jeff. Two for two. With regards to enrollment numbers, I mean, I think we have to look that, I think it's roughly 80% of our budget is salaries and staff, right? It's FTE. So not making a statement here, but just kind of a natural thing. So when we have less sections, for example, let's talk about the elementary school, right? So if we have less students, we have less sections, there's less need for the FTE, right? So that could be one correlation there. I'm not sure if that's what you're asking, but, you know, what, what I say when I see declining numbers, I see that, you know, there, there may be less need for that FTE. Now, that being said, we know over time that numbers go down, they dip, and then they come back up. So, you know, while we might be seeing a downward trend, eventually we know from history that there's going to be another surge and another growth. But that's how I look at it. When, when someone were, if someone were to talk to me about, you know, lower enrollment, then if you have less kids, you know, the core FTE might decrease. There might be other FTEs that you need for additional services and everything, but that's what it is to me.
I just, I, I'm such a rule follower and I know I'm not really supposed to jump in. I'm just supposed to let you talk.
We're very free and easy here tonight.
What, you know, just what I think of though, for, for example, is I'm one of, you know, I've got the full array of kids right now, elementary, middle, high school. And my elementary student is at North Straffield. There was a time when the board was thinking about putting like the ACC satellite at North Straffield and taking away our kindergarten wing and that got shelved. And now, if that were the case, we would be way over, you know, populated. And so just, I, I know that these numbers like shrink and expand, but to me, the danger is in losing fantastic staff because there's like a temporary dip. And it's, it's going to happen at my kid's middle school. I'm, you know, I'm, I went through with the understanding that this team model was what helped children make that transition from the elementary school to the middle school and then onto high school. And, you know, gosh, middle schoolers need, you know what? Maybe this is a discussion for my therapist, but middle schoolers need a lot. And I am really alarmed to think of like these huge resources being taken away, maybe losing them from the district altogether, when we're going to go back up. I just, I don't know.
So can I just follow up to that since we're having a dialogue now? No, that's all right. For example, at your school at North Straffield, that, that was a surprising spike of population, right? And it, and it, no, but I'm saying like throughout the pandemic, that's not where I think a lot of people would have anticipated that much influx based on our previous projections and, and whatnot, right? So, but one thing to make the point of though is, I think this administration and previous administrations have done a good job of, we're not, when we say we're, we're reducing staff, we're not laying people off, right? This has been done through attrition. So you're not, in the past, you're not like going out and firing these teachers because you don't need a section now. There, there are natural trends and there are natural retirements over time. And what you do at the beginning of the school year is you're, and, and, you know, a section is added or, or whatever it is, you make those adjustments then. But historically, we haven't been laying people off because of these ups and downs.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. I think Mr. Peterson was next.
I'll just add a few things. I was going to make that, that point is that this has generally been an organic process. And sometimes when we, you know, we, we try to project retirements every year, sometimes we, we get it wrong and, and there's a budget adjustment that needs to be made for that. So we are, we're really not looking at, at slicing off and, you know, our, our capacity in, in this issue. And we have been able to hire. I think we're a reasonably attractive district. So when, when there are additional sections, we have, we have been able to staff them. So I, I do take your point about kind of the institutional knowledge, the, the experience. We don't, we don't want to lose that. And I think we're very cognizant of that. The other thing that I was going to say is, I, I think that there is a relationship, Mr. Asa said something like this, it's not a one-to-one because we have other areas of the budget that are growing at, at a much faster clip. You know, we are, we're facing a, you know, an 8% increase in health insurance costs this year. We're facing down higher commodity costs. So even, even in the case where we, we may see a shrinkage of overall population in the schools, we may still see overall costs being higher because of these other areas that are just accelerating much faster.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Maxine Cannelly.
I'd just have to start by saying, I think one of my takeaways from this night will be the incredibly upsetting news that you have a high schooler. So I just, I guess I've been here for a while, but I, I agree with the point, I was going to make the same point about, you know, attrition. That said, $3 million cut this year with a very, very explicit request, pointed request from the Board of Selectmen that we much more aggressively address structural change. And that is what produced the list that went out to parents. It's not, and, and we all know this and I think it, it deserves repeating to the public, that that is, that list is not going to be the end-all be-all. That's not, that's not our shopping list. Those were things that represented, well, some were simply known entities where we knew those could represent savings, but the others represent, this is what structural change can look like. And to your point, those would be people not looking to retire who lose their job. So let's be honest about what we're talking about. So that structural change will be fewer FTEs. And look, I should, I should take that back. There's, I suppose one could optimistically hope that that would be represented by retirements. I don't think that's the case. And so that it absolutely could be people losing their jobs. And those are people whom we value, in whom we have invested. And that said, you know, it, it, sometimes that is the appropriate decision if all of a sudden, you know, elementary school enrollment went down significantly, as Mr. Asa pointed out, you know, you will have fewer sections. And if you have more staff than what you need for that, those are actions taken by building administrators. But just to specifically address a $3 million cut with a charge of find the structural change so that it can long-term impact the budget, that is another shade to this.
Thank you, Ms. Maxine Cannelly. Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, I'm sorry to jump back in again. I was desperately going through my bag of tricks here and I've just found some historical information that I just think is really important to state publicly, you know, because there definitely is an argument saying, well, the budgets, the enrollment's going down, so the budget shouldn't be going up. And I unfortunately don't have all of the backup information for this. All I have are numbers. This was some research I did a few years back. So in 1978, '79, between that year and 1989, '90, the enrollment dropped from 9721 to 6,014. In that time, the budget doubled. It increased 6.4%, 4.4%, 5%, 5%, 5.4%, 5%, 10.1%, 8%, 6.9%, 6.8% and 7%. And obviously, the budget numbers were a lot smaller then, the overall budget, I should say, but it did double in that time while the enrollment plummeted by three, over 3,000 students. So I, and again, unfortunately, the information I had was purely the budget numbers. I'm sure there is a lot more information to that as to exactly why these numbers continue to rise at the level they did. But nonetheless, it just goes to show that the narrative that somehow enrollment going down, and our enrollment has not gone down by 3,700 students. And it hasn't doubled in 10 years either, actually. It took us about 17 years to double. So, and again, it, it's never to say that there shouldn't always be ways that we can be looking to be as efficient as possible, to find efficiencies, to not simply say, well, we're just going to throw lots of money on it. But I don't think anyone here ever thinks that that's really the attitude that we've had here. had here in this town or on this board. But I just think it just goes to that narrative that somehow enrollment going down means that costs should not be going up. And I don't think that's necessarily the case.
Can I add something very quickly there?
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Mr. Peterson, you would like to dovetail on that?
To that, to that point, those are interesting statistics. And the one thing that occurred to me when you were talking about that was that some of those early years were high inflation years. But by the same token, the past 12 months have seen the highest rate of national inflation since 1981. So we need to be cognizant of that as a board and as a town and how that may impact our expenses going forward.
Yes. Patiently waiting. Ms. Jacobson, you were, you were first.
Okay. I'm going to give a shot back to your original question on the enrollment issue. You know, oftentimes, we talk about formulas in terms of what goes into a formula to account for a cost of something. And I would say that when you simply look at an indicator as simplistic as that, you're missing all the inputs and outputs of such a formula as to make a basis of your determination. So on an annual basis, you have to factor in the enrollment, which in this budget, there is a large enrollment adjustment contained within the budget that's already been proposed. So that is included in this budget. But you also have to look at not only this year, but in, let's say, last 10 years, five years, whatever you want to look at. We've had a massive increase in free and reduced lunch kids. We've had a large increase in special ed needs. ELL has increased a little bit, but it's been pretty flat, but it has still increased. Each of these, and even the state formulas in terms of the grants that we receive, have weights to them. It's not a one-to-one ratio. So when someone who is looking at this from a financial standpoint, as you would with any company, what are our inputs and outputs on an annual basis? You also have the plus-minuses on the contracts. You have plus-minuses on emergency, emergency repairs. You have plus-minuses on anything that happens with our transportation. So you have to string together a logical and reasonable formula that accounts for everything in a corporation or in our case, a district, just like you would for a company. You know, and we hear a lot about private sector, this, that, or other times, some things. You know, these A aren't widgets. But beyond that point, you know, I don't know of a board sitting on a big, large Fortune 500 or Fortune 50 company that would say, we're going to cut off our knees and provide less service to our shareholders and devalue the worth of what we provide. Yeah, you want to look for ways that you can save, and we do that. And I know the administration does that. And like I said before, we'll do that continuously and working with, you know, hopefully collaboration of the town on some of the numbers as they come in. But at the end of the day, we're here for the town and for the students that we serve, ultimately, at the end of the day. So if we think about it, for those who may not think about this necessarily with such heart that we do around the children or staff, but even if they want to think of it as a business, then put together a business formula that you would do so on the other side of this.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Ms. Guernsey?
I just wanted to make a quick point about, to address your question about the middle school teachers and the value that they add. And I just wanted to say, I mean, there were some responses from other board members that spoke about, you know, the, that some of those losses could be made up through attrition or retirement or whatever. And, you know, that would be great because we've seen that at the elementary school level, but we haven't really experimented with that much at the middle school level. This is the first time we've seen changes of this proposed magnitude in, I don't know how long. So when we look at the certifications that these teachers have, they're different than our elementary school stu, I mean, our sixth grade teachers, you know, there are less places for them to go in middle school for a lot of them. So I think that the burden that we carry with this specific situation could be more harmful than it has been in the past just because of who it's targeting. That's just my opinion. I don't know how it will play out.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. Ms. Vitale?
Just to go back to, you know, less kids equals less money. It's not that simplistic. And Ms. Jacobson, really, you know, she touched on, you need to look at who those kids are, what their needs are, you know, do they have special needs? Are they free and reduced? Do they need special services? Are they in high school or are they in elementary school? High schoolers cost more to educate than an elementary schooler. Even if you have a decline in elementary school, we have 11 elementary schools. How many sections? You know, are they all in third grade? Because then maybe, you know, or they're all leaving third grade, then maybe you'd see a reduction in sections. But you might not. You know, it really, it depends on where they are. So you really need to dive deeper into who the kids are, what their needs are, what their grade level is, and what school they're in, and whether or not that equates with a cost saving. Sometimes it might, sometimes it might not.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Any other members of the board? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. McWinnie, for coming tonight. Who was next? Trudy, you here to talk? Just sit and listen?
When the moderator knows everybody's first name.
The other, Darrell, Alex, do you have anything to say?
These are the super fans in the audience.
Well, there's not too many people here, so. All right, Ms. Flynn, did you want to come back to the podium? Come on down. Da-da-da, da-da-da, da-da.
Kelly gave me, Kelly gave me a little bit of PTSD thinking about the last Board of Ed meeting before the pandemic. And I was sitting here kind of very much saying that North Stratfield was a booming community, and we were watching construction. We've had six new houses go up on my street since, that was pre-pandemic. It's only gotten worse. Lake Hills is the same. So I'm kind of coming back to that. You know, we were in the middle of the beginnings of those conversations and, you know, I, because I'm, I don't even know what I am at this point. I went back on faces and kind of went back to the history of the redistricting 10-plus years ago, and you can see what it does to a community. You can see what it drives. And we've seen, in the past two years, probably the most devastating time for not only children, but our public education system. And I can't think of a time that I ever learned about in school. So just looking forward, I'm really curious how you guys see yourself balancing the genuine need for looking at the efficiencies in our school or the structural change or whatever term we're using today to talk about reducing costs. But I want to know how you're going to protect our kids in that charge because they've been through a lot. And our kids have been through a lot, our communities have been through a lot. I mean, I was speaking today that I spent the last two weeks, every day after school, on the blacktop till about 5:30 because it's sunny, and my kids have never been happier. You know, I have two first graders who started their journey in Fairfield Public Schools at the ECC. I will be indebted to this district forever for that. And to see them, you know, interacting with their peers, getting to know their teachers better, and getting to know our community that I so proudly serve as a PTA president at, has been everything. So I just want you guys to speak to maybe how you're going to protect that piece of our children because it is a lot different than March of 2020. And sadly, I wish it wasn't. I wish, I mean, the idea that I'm wishing for a redistricting talk, but I just think it looks a lot different now. So maybe you could speak to how you're approaching it in this time.
Thank you. Ms. Maxine Cannelly, want to lead us off?
I think the, the important thing is that what everyone here is committed to is to do it thoughtfully and not knee-jerk. You know, we were kind of forced into a position with the, you know, explosive growth of the ECC, looking at needing something at the time, Walter Fitzgerald, the ECC needs, tremendous imbalance in where our population was versus where our seats were. And so we were trying to come at it, and now that that has calmed down a bit, I mean, we're very, very grateful that, you know, the town supported us in the purchase of giant steps, so that Walter Fitzgerald is in a beautiful facility now. The, some of the population explosion issues have calmed down a bit. Not that we don't still have imbalance, and we do still have the ECC, but with COVID, those numbers are not as large as they had been. But we know they're going to come back. So what had been a, we better hurry up and move a little bit, everyone has now been able to have, you know, had the time to take the step back, and now let's start this thoughtfully. You know, and I think bringing out, you know, Ms. Asa and Ms. Vitale bringing forward the bylaw amendment, to start up that facilities committee is a vital first step to get a lot of that type of work done. I think it's going to be extremely important with the public that we make the case for why it's needed. You know, that, that there's that whole education piece. And I would completely agree that racial imbalance is not going to be what's driving this. The needs of the district and the needs of the children will be what drive the discussion. And so by doing that thoughtfully, by making the case as we go, by having plenty of opportunities for, you know, public input, which, you know, whether by email or in person, people will understand where we are going and, most importantly, why, and how we are better serving the town by doing so. I think all of those will play into how this is going to be a little bit different from where we were in this position two years ago, where it was, you know, we were, we were up for the task. You know, we knew it was going to be hard, but we were up for the task. But circumstances are a little bit different now, but the need to have the conversation is still there. And I think that's what we are embarking on calmly.
Thank you. We're going to go to Ms. Vitale first. Sorry, Jeff. We've heard your voice a lot tonight. We haven't heard hers yet, so.
You know, I, I agree with everything Ms. Maxine Cannelly said. You know, there isn't anybody up here who isn't going to be considering anything other than thoughtfully. And I can tell you, I spoke about it at our facility committee meeting the other day. Where we were two and a half years ago and the discussions we were having and where we are now are just completely different. I can't imagine if we had gone forward and none of that happened and made decisions and then we see where we are now. And, you know, nobody knows the trauma of the past two years, I feel like, better than me. I have seen it in our children. I have advocated for our children. I think there are a lot of parents and children who are deeply traumatized by the past two years, and we are still living it. And it will take a very long time to come out of. And I am not in any rush to push some sort of, you know, plan out there to disrupt the lives of our families and students. I think now more than ever, we need to slow down and take the time to figure things out. You know, we had said in the, in the facilities committee meeting, you know, not just where we were before the world shut down with redistricting and all of those plans, but now where are we now? Enrollment numbers might be down. We had an influx of people moving in to Fairfield during the pandemic. And now we're facing potential bills from the legislature along our transit lines. And what's that going to do for our development and our population in our schools, which could explode? We have no idea where that's going to go and what the projections are going to be and what the developments are going to be. And all of those things, you know, you'd hate to make a decision now that would be drastically different six months from now because something changes we just couldn't foresee. So I think it's just important to know, I'm confident everybody on this board is, as what you've heard tonight, very aware of all of the things that our children and families are facing and will be genuinely thoughtful about where we go moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. I was going to say many of the things that Ms. Vitale was going to say, but less eloquently. I think I have very great confidence in this board and its willingness to look at the child first in any large decision. That said, strategic planning is part of our charge. Kind of long, the long-term health and vitality of the district is important to us. And I think these conversations are important to, important to have, but never taking our eyes off the impact on the kids. I do want to make kind of one technical point again that Ms. Vitale sort of raised. You may remember when we were talking in 2020, there was some issues with the projections that we were talking about relative to the amount of development that was going on in town. I remember Dom DeFonte prepared a report of things that were not included in the projection. And for years, you know, Ms. Pitco, I think several times, asked previous superintendents for population distribution in multifamily developments. So that, that's something that, no matter what, is going to be on our mind. And in the current development environment, I think that we can't, we can't avoid looking at that either. So we're certainly aware that that's, that's an issue.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Vitale?
Just to go back to the structural change, and again, it comes back to how you define it. But when you look at our budget this year especially, special education is driving, you know, a good part of the increase. But we are also putting in some changes. The Early Literacy Academy that was first instituted last year and that we're expanding this year, that's a structural change. It does come with a price tag. But over time, the hope is that we are better serving our children and potentially keeping them in district rather than having them outplaced at a higher price tag. So that is a structural change that both will, in the long run, save money and also better service our kids and keeping them in district. So I think that more looking at programming like that is strategic, that it kills two birds with one stone, hopefully. Also, just, you know, looking at our buildings, you know, efficiencies in our building management systems, how we can find savings in electricity, more efficient boilers, you know, monitoring our systems to make sure the lights are going off, you know, little things like that across the entire district could end up saving monies. And that's where we'd rather see, you know, any sort of changes than having to reduce Because we have been, you know, told, we added the steam program in the last three years. And people have said to me, well, you know, it's, it's nice to have, but do you really need it? You know, you have a budget. You know, I would like a big TV, but if I don't have the money for it, then I'm not going to buy the big TV. So I think that as a community, we need to be engaged. And for some of these programs, if it's important to our stakeholders and to our community, then they need to voice that to this board and to other boards that have more control over the funding. And we'll have those discussions. I mean, I think this board is committed to being good fiscal stewards of the town's money, but our primary mission is our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale.
Can I just say, I didn't want to imply that any of you wouldn't be thinking of our kids, just, it has been. And I would highly, highly recommend if this process continues in the way it is, in facilities committees, that you do begin reaching out to parent communities earliest. And TPZ and all that work that wasn't done, you know, we hear all the time how siloed our committees are in town. I mean, I wish that the Board of Finance had reps to you guys. I wish that TPZ had reps to you guys. It's all so interconnected. So any advocacy on that, we'd appreciate, or I, I don't know, I'd appreciate. Thank you.
Well, just one follow-up. As we're moving on finalizing the district improvement plan, there's going to be opportunities for community feedback. And I would just encourage parents to take that opportunity to connect with administration and the board and the working group, which Ms. Guernsey and Ms. Kelly are a part of, to just share your thoughts on these very issues. So thank you again for your, your second comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. I apologize to the gentleman in the back. Did you want to speak? Come on up. Just tell us your name, address, and write it down on the pad there, please. You have to press the push button there and hold it. Keep your finger on.
I have to hold this while I'm talking?
You have to hold it while you're talking. Do we have any assistance to hold the button? No.
You just need a paperweight, I think. I'll fill this out after.
That's fine. Just tell us your name.
Yeah, David Lindenbaum. My apologies, I came in late. I was actually under the impression that this meeting was being held at the Fairfield-Ludlow High School auditorium. I had never been inside that building. I can tell you the security for the building is very good at this time of night, and it was, I actually managed to get into the auditorium. It's pitch black, there's no one there. Also, want to apologize, I've never been to one of these meetings before. I heard that there are rules about who can speak and when, and obviously which buttons to hold. So, you know, obviously, stop me if I'm crossing any lines or breaking any rules because I'm unfamiliar with the process here. A little background from me, I've, we moved to, me and my wife moved to Fairfield about five years ago. We have a son in third grade at Riverfield and a daughter in kindergarten in Riverfield. One of the things that drew us to One of the things that drew us to Fairfield was the quality of schools here. That was a high priority for us in terms of finding a place to move. And another apology is that I have not been following the whole budget process, obviously. So I'm kind of jumping in at this point, but because my son is in third grade and he excels very well in math, one of the key interests for us is the Math Academy. And you had said that, you know, if parents have an interest in something, they should voice their interest, and that is something I'm here to voice. Someone, I think, mentioned companies investing in their products and widgets, and these are not widgets. And I know, you know, I heard also when I was in the back of the room, special interests for certain kids and how certain investments are made for special interests. I consider this a special interest for our kid, for our son, who has a special interest because he excels in math. He comes home and he does his math homework, and it is boring for him. It is just like, he just, it's not challenging. I can see, he needs to be pushed. He needs more math instruction. He needs to be around kids who are excellent in math, and he needs to be pushed to that. And I would think that a community like this would not only want to serve the needs of students, who I understand have special needs in terms of people that need maybe, I don't want to call it the bottom end, but who have challenges, let's say, but also at the top end, right? You would want to generate and give opportunities for kids in this community to excel if they can. You know, when I say I'm jumping in here, I understand that this has been a discussion that has been ongoing. I know that there have been issues, that this has been brought up at meetings before. I am not as versed as I would like to be right now in terms of what the issues have been and why. I understand it is no longer on the budget currently. I do, however, understand that it has been a wildly successful program and that it has not been, from what I understand, a very big cost sink. And so I guess, more of a question than a statement, I guess, I don't know if you guys typically handle statements or questions, but why, what is the state of the Math Academy? I feel like I'm very unsure about where that stands now, if it is dead or if it is still on the table. And either way, what are the considerations now in terms of whether or not it might actually move forward? And I'm going to let go of the button right now.
Thank you, and we did not explode. Thank you. This is the perfect night for you to come because this is the night where generally they would not respond to your statement or question, so this is the night for them to do that. So whoever wants to go first, Mr. Asa.
So I'm sorry, could you say, repeat your name again?
David Lindenbaum.
Okay, David. So we actually have a lot in common. I am a Riverfield parent of a third and kindergartner also, and my son is very much into math as well. So just to answer your question, Mr. McDermott just mentioned normally, first of all, thank you for coming. And it's always nice to see parents get engaged and start coming to meetings. Some of them can be very long and drawn out, but they are, you will gain a lot of information. You can also watch from home, and they are recorded. And there are a lot of, what I was going to say is, there's many recordings on this topic from meetings where we've covered this. This has been, you know, discussed for years. Last year, it was cut from the budget and then it was added back in. This year, it was eliminated from the budget. It was not put back in. The Board of Education unanimously passed our budget 9-0, and it has started going through the other town bodies. We are looking at a potential $2.5 million reduction plus another $400,000 in potential insurance costs that were, we didn't budget for, so possibly $3 million. So the likelihood of it coming back into the budget is very unlikely. As I mentioned, and I'm sure I know a couple people that are going to want to speak tonight, again, going back and reviewing some of the meeting recordings could be helpful for you to kind of see the history. And I'm sure there's somebody on this board that might be able to help find some specific ones for you. If not, I can try and look into it as well, but.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. Ms. Maxine Cunnelli?
Yeah, I know. That's why, I don't know if you saw me get a big smile on my face. You don't have to convince me. I'm not looking to repeat, because it was a conversation over numerous meetings. I have very passionately advocated on behalf of the Math Academy. I was very disappointed to see it go away, and I also do not want to misrepresent it to you. It went away not because of money. Budget was not the driver. There was not a support for the program as it was currently envisioned. Not that there was a lack of desire to serve children, but there was a lack of support for the program, which broke my heart because I saw it in the manner that you see it. I saw it as a fantastic win for the district, as a fantastic program that was special, and we gave up something special. But I'm not, you know, I don't know how else to say it, lost on that one. And I respect where my fellow board members were coming from. They too have an interest in serving all of the children, not just the ones who are able to get a ride to Holland Hill in order to engage in that program. But what we have been assured by our superintendent, and I've been, I had already been in conversation with him and shared a number of different plans and ideas, is that we were, let me backtracking to last, I can't remember if it was November or December, we were presented with one option of a way to try to serve children with greater math challenge in all elementary schools. And the board fairly resoundingly gave its feedback that we were not interested in that specific plan. We wanted something much more robust and targeted for students who excel in math and who the grade level math is woefully inadequate for what they are capable of doing, and we are holding them back by maintaining them simply within their grade level. And so Superintendent Cummings did assure us that by the end of the year, that staff will have worked on something. It certainly is a good reminder that we need to follow up and see where, what the status is on that. That would have zero budget impact, so therefore it's not a surprise to the board. We're not having to make a financial decision about it, but simply that there would be a means of serving children such as yours, who have an interest and have a keen ability in the topic so that they can accelerate.
Thank you, Ms. Maxine Cunnelli. Ms. Vitale?
Hi, and thank you. I just want to speak to the public at home who listens to some questions like this and gets upset. When we talk about special ed, you know, there is no bottom and top. A lot of our children who may qualify for programs such as the Math Academy are often twice exceptional. They not only are gifted, but they also qualify for special education. We don't have a top and bottom. We have a spectrum of different abilities, one no better than the other, and all deserving of the supports that they need. And I historically have not been a fan of the Math Academy for several different reasons. However, I am supportive of children who excel in math getting the assistance they need in class and the extra work and the differentiation that I think they should have. Just like all of our other students who get differentiated instruction in the classroom, I think when we, the district has a way of assessing needs in kids, and that's how those services are determined. So when the teams get together and assess the needs of a child to determine what type of services they need, and often maybe they'll go through a 504 or a PPT and, you know, get services on an IEP. And for accelerated math, you know, I'm a fan of the professional development for that teacher. I know we've had some discussions at the board table about the difference between differentiating instruction to a child who might need more accelerated curriculum. But oftentimes, when a parent of a child who struggles to learn gets told that their child can somehow learn in a regular classroom with differentiated instruction, it's hard for me to see why that's so different for somebody else. So, you know, I've also said, if we want to have deeper conversations about that, then we should. What does that mean for the teacher? What does that mean for differentiated instruction? What does it really look like? What is inclusion? What does that really look like? What do we want to see in our schools? What do we expect from our teachers? Does this mean eventually we're going to need, you know, duly certified staff? I don't know. But I definitely think it's worth talking about. And I wasn't a fan of Math Academy as it's been functioning. I think that was an overall sentiment of the board. In general, it would be nice if we could get every, this available to every child who qualified for it in all of our schools and not just one school where some kids got picked and then had to find their own transportation to get there.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Ms. Kelly?
I don't think I'm going to say anything new that hasn't been said, but I feel like I have to speak to it just because I was pretty vocal about how I also didn't really support the program for many of the reasons that Ms. Vitale mentioned. I personally want to see differentiation or some sort of program in each individual homeschool. That is, I, you know, people say, we move to our, I want to walk to school, like the redistricting comes up, I want to stay in my neighborhood school, I want to stay in my neighborhood. You should. You shouldn't have to leave your neighborhood school just because you're good in math. Like, that just makes no sense to me. And I understand it was a wonderful program. It should have been. It was a, it was very specifically catered. It was a custom curriculum with, I hate this term, like-minded students. No one's going to not like that. I don't care if it was designed around math, art, language arts, everyone's going to love it. I can, nobody was going to march up here and say, please get rid of it. I hate it. I don't deny that the people who were in it had a wonderful experience, and that's lovely. But I think by having something in your homeschools, we can reach out to more than just the 40 invitations that went out to third graders. I have to believe there's more than 40 kids in the third grade level. There, I'm sure there was just a cutoff based on, you know, putting it, rehoming it, if you will, but like, there's probably many more. I'd also like to see it then be a little more fluid. You're identified, I believe, you were identified in third grade, then you were there for fourth and fifth. What if by fourth grade, maybe you had caught up and now you were bored? Like, is there flexibility to move in? Or like, are we branded as the Math Academy kid in third grade? Like, there was lots of things I didn't like about it philosophically. And then lastly, I will just throw in that I was a firm believer that we did have a gender equity issue in the identification process, which did not sit well with me at all. In the first year, I think there were 40 invitations that went out, and only 10 of them were to girls. And in that first class, I believe, now you can't, I know you can't pick and choose who opts into the program, but the first class ran with 10 boys and three girls. And that just doesn't, as I will say, I was a math major. Math is my thing. That's what I love. And I'm very passionate about women and math and STEAM and all that, and that just didn't sit well with me either. I felt like we were leaving some girls behind unintentionally. I don't think that was done on purpose. But I think there's a lot of work to do in the identification process, and should it be in the homeschools? I think there would be a better opportunity to have a feel, a better identification process of who we are differentiating to.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Anybody else on the board? Ms. Vitale?
I'm not going to repeat what my fellow board member said, and I don't want to get into teacher-specific, but if you haven't already done so, I would just make, share your concerns about your son being bored with his homework with the teacher, and maybe he or she can work with, you know, providing some more challenging homework at this point. And as Ms. Maxine Cunnelli said, we are looking to staff to develop more challenging program within each of our elementary schools. And I thank you for coming out tonight. It was nice meeting you. And in terms of the forum at Fairfield-Ludlow High School, there is another town hall meeting for the Board of Finance on Saturday morning at 9:30 to discuss the budget. So that's probably where you got Fairfield-Ludlow High School on your radar, just in case you are now hooked on town meetings.[1477.83][1477.83](laughter) There's another one on Saturday at 9:30.
At Ludlow, not Ward.
At Ludlow High School, which you now, you know, now you know.
No, I think you went to Ward tonight, right? You can press the button. Go ahead.
I can talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
I went to Ludlow. So, can I, can I talk now? Oh, yeah.
Speak away. You know, we have a light crowd tonight, so.
Right. So what I've learned, one thing I've learned is that I should take notes here because addressing 10 people talking is pretty much impossible unless I'm taking notes. But one thing, to your point, when I said bottom, I did not mean anything derogatory in terms of that word. Also, I don't know if even saying anything further is pointless. It almost sounds like this is a done deal and there's really not much that can be said, but just to kind of, kind of respond to some of it, which is that I take your point about differentiated learning, and I think that, to a certain extent, I think it does make sense to keep students of all abilities in one room because I think students can learn from each other, and I think it creates a nice diverse environment. But I can tell you that especially in math, and maybe even you could speak to this, that when you are, excel in math, it's very hard, I don't know if you've ever taught, but I, my mom is, was an elementary school teacher for 20 years, and I've talked to her about this, and it's very hard, and I can see it challenging for my student's teacher to teach the level of math that he really could do. Like, it's the type of thing where you can't, I mean, for reading, they can give different books out to different kids and say, you can read Harry Potter and you can read, you know, Mary had a little lamb, whatever your level is, right? It's easy to do that. But something like math, it's much, much harder to do, especially because, especially like the Math Academy, we understand is that they're combining like two years into one. You just can't do that in the middle of the class when you're getting up and trying to teach. I don't think that's an option. You know, in terms of the diversity, I appreciate that too. I understand that. But like, to me, that is just a function of the selection process. It doesn't, to me, go to the heart of whether or not Math Academy itself is something that's valued. I agree with you. I think, I think there's, you know, I'm an engineer, and in engineering and science and math and all those fields, women are underrepresented, for sure, right? But you could almost use Math Academy as an opportunity to reach those girls, right? To find those girls in our community and give them an opportunity to do that. It seems like in the past, the selection process didn't work the way perhaps it could have to help those girls, but, you know, there we are. I also understand, someone mentioned transportation. I'm not up on that issue, honestly. I've heard that as an issue in terms of who can get there and whether that's fair enough for the students that can get there. To me, that is what I understand to be a budget issue, right? If you could get buses to get the kids there. But in terms of being able to walk to your school, I appreciate that as well. I remember when, before we were moving here, we had friends that were living in the community as well, and they told us in their area, Fairfield, that there was redistricting that was going on that might have forced their student to bus over to another school, which sounded unpleasant to us. But I got to say, for the opportunity for something like Math Academy, we would be willing certainly to have our child get on a bus to go to the school because I think it would be such an enriching experience for him that it would be worth it to do that. I think that's all I have to say.
Okay. Well, thank you. Anybody, Ms. Maxine Cunnelli?
Just one quick follow-up. I feel like you have actually listened to all of our meetings because you just perfectly encapsulated an awful lot of our discussions. And what I would just say as my final point, one, I want to reiterate one point you said, which was one of the crux of this whole debate, was the fact you cannot differentiate for the type of learner that your son is. You can't do it in the third grade classroom. That is not what differentiate, differentiating is not intended to do an entirely different grade level of math for a student. It's just not. And that's why if the dialogue that we get from staff is simply regarding differentiation, I know I'm going to be someone who's going to be advocating for certain, no, that's not what we were promised, and that's not what these children need, and we are here to advocate for their, the children's needs. So one, I just want to pick up on that point. But my second point is something I would charge to you, which is, we, I have great faith that staff is going to come up with something because they have promised us that they would. We don't know what it is yet. You, of course, will be, you know, working with a new principal next year, and that I hope that you are very engaged in what the program is that does get rolled out in terms of giving feedback, in terms of how can we make this better? How can we serve your child, who's obviously going to be looking to take advantage of whatever we come up with, you know, in Riverfield itself? Because that's something that's going to serve not only him very well, but then the next year's students as well, who, whom we are trying to reach through this.
Thank you. I got to say, I'm skeptical. Thank you. I, I got to say, I'm skeptical that whatever they come up with will actually be anywhere as beneficial as Math Academy, or even significantly beneficial, I have to say. We've, we've already reached out to our teacher and the school district, the, the people in our school to try to come up with a solution, even now in third grade before he gets to the next level, and we've been met with pretty much no response so far. But I, I think my only other question is, is, is there anything else that can be done? I mean, maybe I guess the, the question's directed to you, but in general, like, you know, if I came to every meeting from now until like, you know, you don't want to see my face and, and, you know, I, I don't want to break into school auditoriums anymore. But, you know, what, I, 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 am I hearing that it's dead? Like, am I hearing that it's really like, at this point, there's no chance? Or am I hearing, well, last year it was dead, and then they added it? It's dead, huh?
I even know it's dead, and I'm not on the board of it, but anybody else, or that's it? Oh, sorry, Ms. Rotelli.
Yeah. I just want to say, because I know we've talked about this before, but when we talk about the fact that math cannot be differentiated for your child because they're so advanced, you are opening up a giant can of worms for all the children you're saying math can be differentiated to at a, a level below that. All of those children who are being told that they, no, you absolutely can sit in this class, and it will be differentiated to you on your level, but, but not for your child. For your child, it's just too much, and that's not differentiation. It opens up an entire can of worms for the other population of students who's being told that that's the only option you have. And it is, it's something that maybe not a lot of people are familiar with because it's not the life that you're living, but when you're a parent in those PPTs fighting for math support, you're paying attention, and they're listening to you saying that you can differentiate to one level of student, but not the other. So.
I'm going to jump on that, even though you're getting caught in the middle of something that has nothing to do with you. Just, just, just so that you're clear on that.
Do we want to go down this path?
Well, no, I'm going to go down this path because if we're talking to parents at home, which is what Mrs. Rotelli is doing, then I think that a follow-up is needed. And here, what I would say to that point is what I'm very specifically referencing, when I say differentiation can't happen for this, I'm talking at an entirely different grade level that that third grade teacher, one, might not be trained to do, two, has no lessons to do, three, can't pull that one student apart. But your statement regarding all of those students, I think that's far too broad. I absolutely agree with you that I think there is the possibility of some students where the differentiation would not be enough within that classroom. Differentiation is meant to cover a band within the classroom. I, I understand that you know that, but you're trying to make a statement that applies to every student who's been told, we can differentiate for you in the class, and many of them, that will be the case. Others will need some additional support. And so I don't think it's fair for you to have brought this parent in on that. If your comment is directed at my comment, that's a different level discussion.
Yes, it was directed at your comment and not you.
I know that it was.
Okay.
And, and I just, I want to.
Let's cut, let's cut this discussion off here.
I'm going to, I'm going to end it on, on one note, I think that we will both agree on, is that I think for both students, on either side, there's support in there. There's support built into the differentiation help for a student who's not.
Right now, we're not.
No, I'm, no, I'm saying ideally that there would be support on either way to help the accelerated student and the student that needs support. I mean, I'm not going to articulate it clearly, but I'll talk to you about it later, and I did not mean to drag you into that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lindenbaum. Well, belated welcome to Fairfield. We've been there five years. Belated welcome to Board of Ed meeting. Not, this isn't an actual meeting, but you should come more often, and you will be on TV. You can watch yourself tomorrow.
Please, yes.
Yes. And I apologize, I did not see you in the back there.
Thank you for your time. I came in late. That's maybe why you didn't see me. But I do appreciate all your feedback. I didn't mean to be confrontational in my comments. Again, it is something that, you know, we feel strongly about. Glad to hear that we have a, an advocate at least on the board. And though I did not agree with all of the comments that were made, I do respect your, your decision.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You look like you want to come up and speak.
All right.
All right, come on. You know, the clock is ticking.
Oh, my gosh, guys, hi. It's been like three years. Trudy Durrell, Woodcrest Road, here, obviously in Fairfield. I also want to reiterate Kelly's comments to you, just thanking you. As somebody who had to spend the pandemic as an administrator in a different district, on Google forever and ever and ever, every day, I'm so glad we're back in school, like a normal school year. So just thank you for your efforts on behalf of the town, the staff, the kids, the parents. I know that it was a, it's been a very difficult time for everybody, and just thank you so much for just trying to stay the course and make decisions that were sometimes incredibly unpopular but necessary. My question is going back to actually Mr. Sahagian's comments that he brought up and Mr. Asaya's about the legislature not wanting to pick up changing left, Chef versus O'Neill racial balance laws, which I, with which I totally agree, that, with that comment. But my question is, does anyone on this board think that the conversations that are now heating up around 830G and whatever the number and letters of that transit-oriented density bill that are coming up, is a way to perhaps get to, I don't want to call it a fix. I don't really know what word to use, but get to the racial balance conversation via our lawmakers? Because I do believe that there are many more lawmakers across the state that are willing to discuss those two bills. So that's, that's my question before the board right now. Is there, workaround is not the correct term, but do you think that we can leverage the conversations around 830G and whatever the other bill is numbered to, to help our conversation here? You're the vice chair. You can go.
Okay.
But no, that's open to anybody.
Anybody. Ms. Jacobson, I'm.
You want to talk state? I'm your girl. So I believe, well, it's 830G and I believe it's 5429, unless I'm mixing a couple of numbers in there. But, yeah, that, I mean, I'm really focused on ed bills, but as we say, everything's connected. As far as I know, that bill doesn't have an affordability component in it.
I'm not aware that it does, but my bigger concern with asking the question is, similar to 830G, building is going to, building potentially could be happening in a wide variety of areas, but within Fairfield, you know, our transportation that could, is concentrated, let's just say. And where do most of the, where does most of the building happen? And where do most of the people end up living? And where do most of the people who have children end up going? It's pretty much limited to one, possibly two schools, thereby affecting potentially racial balance and definitely density and therefore facilities. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, I mean, if something, if we start building like 7,000 new units, and, you know, that's not going to happen overnight, you know, it's going to take a number of years for that to happen, and you can never predict what grade levels, should they have children even, because, you know, they, we did a whole TOD study, as you know, many years ago, and we have, we worked prior administration, and we've got a, you know, weighted factor here per unit, you know, that's kind of used. But even using that small factor, you're talking 600 to 800 students. Of course, you don't know what grade level. But, you know, in terms of the racial imbalance thing, I think we're talking egg, you know, apples and oranges a little bit. But, you know, I've raised the issue that, you know, if you really want to pass something, then why are we not looking at concentration provisions, right? So there is no such thing as a concentration provision, and if you were really worried about it, then why wouldn't that be the case? Not saying that, not advocating for that. I'm not saying that that's, but if you are truly, let's say the State Board of Education is really worried about these types of things and the number of communities that they actually count, then why wouldn't they advocate for a concentration provision around, say, an 830G? Say, if you're in a, want to build that in an area that already is identified on the state plan, then no, then go somewhere else, right? But that doesn't exist. So, I mean, I could probably talk about this for a really long time in terms of conflicting goals or conflicting statutes, but I think that as you've heard tonight, as we look at long-term planning and hopefully collaborate with other bodies, that these are some things that are going to need to be factored into, depending on what happens. Obviously, if you're looking at large numbers of units, which not, won't necessarily breed like a ton of kids, but it might, but they will be concentrated, right? So you're going to necessarily, possibly have to go out, right? So up and out, away from the stations. So I don't, I mean, it's all TBD right now on the TOD, but yeah, obviously, I think that we all have been aware for a long time how a lot of development can impact our schools. And I think that, you know, I'll just plug in my own two cents. When I see these things, not going to debate their value or lack thereof, but it really does distress me when they don't put in school provisions. So if you want to talk about what's needed from a sewer standpoint or an electricity standpoint, let's be mindful of what's going to be needed for our school for infrastructure as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson, and as well as the wrapping, Mr. Asa.
Thank you. To answer your question, no, I don't believe so. Unfortunately, I think it's, you know, I, I am open to any ideas. I just don't see reps outside of Greenwich and Fairfield and maybe one other town advocating for that. And I think Ms. Jacobson makes a great point with the concentrations and everything, but I also have no faith that they'll do that either.
Thank you for the uplifting feedback.
I call it as I feel it. I mean, I, I, my wife says I have no filter, but that, that's how I truly feel, and it distresses me. It really, it bothers me because unfortunately, I think the original premise of this law, while it may have been great, and it may have accomplished a lot in many towns and cities, I think it's working against certain populations in our town. And I think, as Mrs. Jacobson mentioned it, you know, members of the State Board of Education call McKinley the problem. They use those words, and they should be ashamed of themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. Anybody else?
I was trying to end the evening, hopefully.
If you, if you were trying to end on a high note, you failed.
The weather, it's springtime and the weather is improving.
Wow, thank you so much for pointing that out on television. Thank you.
Maybe, maybe we could go back to Ms. Jacobson wrapping a little more. That could help.
And, and just to comment, thank you, thank you for your comments and others appreciating our work. We are volunteers, but we do this because we, we're also passionate, and we feel that our job is to advocate for the kids and the staff and the district, and that's why we're all here. So thank you for those kind words, and, and I agree with you. The kids are so happy to be, my kids are so happy to be back to some normalcy, and I've seen such a dramatic difference in the last few weeks. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durrell. We appreciate you coming tonight.
What?
I think we are done. I don't see anybody else that wants to step up and speak. Thank you, everybody. That was fun. I appreciate all your hard work and your volunteerism. I think you're doing a great job. And do you want me to call a motion to adjourn here, or you want to adjourn?
No, I think I still have to do that.
There you go.
Before I do that.
It's all yours.
I, I want to thank you, Mr. McDermott, for moderating tonight. I think that Mr. DeWitt, you know, who really prides himself of being one of the best moderators of Board of Ed Town Hall meetings, now just has some competition. So.
Yeah, well, we'll see what happens. I'm, I'm cheaper than him.
So I take, I appreciate you, you know, adding another meeting to your schedule, and thank you for your, yeah, thank you for your service on the RTM, and Mrs. Gerber's saying that, you know, your meeting was canceled, so you're kind of, you owe us one.
I heard her from over here, don't worry.
But thank you. And with that, a motion to adjourn. Ms. Jacobson, seconded by Mr. Rotelli, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. We are adjourned.